This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:31 PM on Tuesday, July 17, 2018, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Mrs. Becker. Chair Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Sussner.
Ms. Seelinger.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
Let's stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In the absence of a school board clerk, I'm reporting Deborah Seelinger as interim school board clerk for this meeting. Congratulations, Ms. Seelinger. 2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, item 5.01, approval of the 2018 strategic plan update for Rochester Public Schools has been renumbered to item 5.02, and we have added item 5.01, closed session, legal advice, and item 7.08, closed session property, to the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 3.01, above and beyond, Mr. Munoz.
At this time, these are our June above and beyond winners, and I would like to read a couple of examples. The first one is for Brenda Wayne, who is maintenance worker here at Edison. Brenda works hard every day to make Edison look great. She's always willing to go the extra mile to make sure her room is set up and to help clean up after an event. She always does this with a smile on her face. Brenda has a great relationship with our student workers, and they love to come to work with Brenda. Thanks for everything you do. The second one is Diane Geese from Washington Elementary. Dear Mr. Munoz, as an EL teacher with 10 years of experience in Rochester Public School System, I readily acknowledge my colleague Diane Geese for special recognition. Although I only worked with her for one year, I came into my current position with the foreknowledge that I had an excellent paraprofessional with whom I'd be working. She has a degree in elementary education, thus serves in a position as a paraprofessional. Diane takes her job very seriously and makes the same kind of investment in students that a teacher would. My position at Washington this past year was part-time. I was providing language services to two other schools concurrently. I felt such assurance and confidence with Diane, who would be working with my students daily in my absence. Diane is a hardworking, very empathetic, and positive person. When students see her, they are always willing to leave their classroom and come work with her in small groups or individually because she makes learning fun and provides incentives to motivate the kids. I spoke with a high school junior who remembered her, and she said she was her favorite. Somehow, she tapped into her personal interests and invested in a reward that Eagles still kept in his collection, the cherished thing. Ms. Geese is someone who goes above and beyond, and it's because of people like her that Washington achieves such merits as it did with the Blue Ribbon Award. Congratulations. And I think Melissa, come up and draw.
Melissa Amundson is here.
My phone doesn't play nicely with the above and beyond winners. So, most of you know me already, but for those watching at home, I'm Melissa Amundson. I'm the president of Rochester Public School Foundation and chief operator of the feedbacks. The mission of the foundation is to support staff in a variety of ways, and this is one way we like to do it, by pulling a name to receive a $25 gift card. And this month, we have a gift card from Pasquale's Pizza. So, I'm going to have somebody reach in here. What's it on it?
Number two.
Number two. Diane Geese Washington.
3.02, school board committee assignments update. Any members care to give the board and others an update on the work you've been doing in your committee assignments? Ms. Workman.
Yes, the policy committee met on June 25, and I will brief those when we get to item 7.07. And I also attended a few events since our last meeting. One was the Genome Unlocking Life's Code on June 22, which was very interesting, and even I could understand it with my non-scientific mind. So, if you haven't seen that, I would encourage you to go. And then I went to a United Way discussion on community, which basically was talking about how various people connect with each other, how much connection do we need, and how can we foster that in the community. And then on July 12, I went to a multicultural networking kickoff luncheon at RCTC and met some very interesting people and programs, not only from Rochester, but also from Mankato and Austin. And then finally, on July 15, I attended the International Association picnic at Silverlake, and there was a lot of good international food to consume.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I thought I would give you an update. As you saw in my weekly update, I attended a conference in Texas. It was Pathways to Equity, and probably one of the better conferences that I've been to in some time. The focus is really on the whole child and equitable education. They really had four areas that they felt that districts need to focus on in order to provide that type of education. It's teacher leadership, and then challenging courses, including STEAM, Bill's not just STEM, but STEAM. And then also collaboration between family and community. And then the last one would have been resources for underserved students. So, it was a really neat conference that you had keynotes, then you had breakout sessions, but you also had time where you had homeroom assignment, where they had all of the Midwest participants in one room. And the good part of it is Steve Aiken, the assistant principal at John Marshall, happened to sign up for the same conference. So, he and I were our team, and we were able to really look at the district and create an equity action plan. And my plan is in August, on August 2, we have our leadership group, which is all of our administrators, supervisors, directors. We will have them for a day, and I'm going to put them through the whole process that we did in two and a half days in a day. And the plan is to have them focus on one of the areas and with their team that will be there to start looking at equity in their building and create, start developing an action plan. And then hopefully, by modeling the process, they'll take it back to their building and do the process with their entire staff before they finalize their action plan. But it was a really good process, and I think it's something that we'll be able to continue to use, and it really fits nicely with one of our strategic goals, which is an area of equity. So, we'll get a jump start on that.
Yeah, and I love that, you know, we're already doing the work, but rather than talking about equity, we're putting so much of this into action. And I know that the biggest part of the conference that you shared with me was having the action plan and actually doing the work. So, I think that's great. Went to a few different things. There were, the Free Speech Forum invited me to speak with them, and we talked a little bit about the graduate profile. Also attended breakfast growl I had, and they emphasized again the critical importance about collaboration and partnerships through post-secondary education and our business communities. And the fantastic potential we have there, the work we're already doing to partner, and the tremendous potential ahead. Today, I was able to spend some time at Rochester's Alternative Learning Center, and when I came into classroom, they're doing summer school there, there was a group full of students and two chickens. This was a group that focuses on raising their own food, and I didn't know if they were making friends with the chickens or learning different ways to prepare them for dinner. Fortunately, it was a friendship-type environment. They're going to be layers, apparently. I don't know a lot about chickens, but these are egg chickens. I don't know which comes first. The program that they have at ALC, that this farming program, is stunning, I think, and it's the best example of project-based learning I have ever seen. Kids out there, many of whom could not succeed in another setting, have a totally hands-on approach. They, whether they know anything about gardening or not, and most of them do not, they get their hands dirty, they get the seeds, they plant them, they nurture them, they harvest them, they produce a tremendous amount of produce, and then they give it away. They have mapped the parts of the city that have the most need for fresh produce. They have partnered with the Bookmobile to make sure folks in those parts of the city get this produce. The staff out there has written all kinds of grants because they're determined that these kids will not only do the work, and they have to clock in and clock out, they're getting good work skills, but they also, that they get experiences that they might not get otherwise. They've taken them camping. They've gone on a canoeing trip. They received an award at the Rochester Country Club, and before they went to the dinner there, they brought in someone to teach the kids what it's like to dine in a really fine restaurant, what all the silverware is about, how not to set your napkin on fire because there's a candle in the middle of the table, although apparently that, they came close at one point. But it's an experience-based program. They are going to be having a fundraiser next week. I know you can't see this, but I have copies if you want it. It's called the Iron Chef. They have invited three local chefs to work with their students in a food preparation challenge. Which chef and the two student sous-chefs will prepare the best meal in one hour? During the preparation, there will be a silent auction, there will be raffles for a quilt and for pie. And there will also be appetizers provided by two of the local restaurants, as well as mocktails. Notice, this is non-alcoholic, mocktails, provided by another vendor. There's information here and also online. If you'd like to come, it's a week from tomorrow, July 25, at the ALC. It's going to be a fantastic, fun event. It begins at 5:00. You can get information by just Googling "Iron Chef" or "ALC" or "Eventbrite." I don't know how that works, but it's Eventbrite, and it's the Iron Chef competition, so I'd encourage you to come. It's going to be a fantastic evening.
I have a question about that. Will tickets be available at the door, or do they have to be purchased in advance?
Tickets will be available at the door. They'd prefer that you get them ahead of time, and I can help you make that happen.
Okay.
Good. Any other events? Okay, thank you. 4.0, consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled off the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Yes, I would like to call attention, the, those that are retiring that are, were in the HR consent. First, the clerical section. Janet Growski is library secretary at Kellogg Middle School for 19 years. Patricia Hansen, office manager for secondary schools at John Adams, 35 years. Sally Johnson, assistant principal secretary at John Adams, 11 years. Paraprofessionals, we have Janice Furrell, special ed para at MSB, six years. Bonnie Lenz, special education para at Franklin Elementary, 28 years. And Anne Obelisiak, special ed para at Sunset Terrace, 26 years. And student nutrition services, Linda Offenthe, elementary lead at Fawa Elementary, 17 years. So, thank all of those individuals for their service to the district.
Thank you. 5.01, closed session. This is an action item.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D, .05, subdivision 3B, I move to go into closed session to receive confidential legal advice from the school board's attorney regarding strategy and options related to the administrative action involving the Minnesota Department of Human Rights.
Sir, a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session.
You don't need any devices?
Okay.
We don't need them?
No.
We are reconvened at 7:03 PM. 5.02, approval of the 2018 strategic plan update of the Rochester Public Schools. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, if you remember, we spent several hours in a study session working on this, and there were two minor details you asked us to look on. The first one was the work on a definition of equity. So, if you look at the very bottom, after the core beliefs, what we did is we looked at the Minnesota Department of Education's definition of equity, which is part of the ESSA plan, and we kind of condensed it to the statement that's on the bottom of that And then I think there was, at the very end of the study session, there was some discussion about the previous core beliefs or core values. We feel that the new ones, universal core beliefs that were discussed at the study session, do capture all of the old ones. I think when I came in 2011 and 2012, we did a strategic plan at that time. We did not reference the previous plan. We took feedback from our community and developed the strategic plan. And then, if you're, just a reminder, we did a thought exchange again with the graduate profile and put it out there a couple times to get feedback from our stakeholders, which we received a lot of feedback. And then we worked with that feedback with the board in a study session, and this is where we landed as far as our three goals and a slight change in the core beliefs. I do believe that, I don't have probably the biggest concern that was mentioned at the study session about the old core values, mainly because I think we can find them in the recommended ones. And basically, just a reminder, we did not use any of the previous strategic plan when we did the current one that we're using right now. So, I can share with you where we found all of the core beliefs in the current core beliefs, if you would like me to, but we were able to identify all of them in different, in the different core beliefs that we currently have on the new document.
Mr. Smith.
I'm just curious, on the core values, we believe the strategic objectives, it says by 2017, all students will. Do we really need to date 2017 anymore since that's passed?
Yeah, that was just the old one, just for reference.
Oh, that is the old one.
Yeah, that's just for reference.
Oh, okay. All right.
The new one doesn't have that on there.
Okay, all right. So, the graduate profile is the new one.
Yeah. And then the three goals are access and equity, student achievement, and if you remember, during the student achievement, that's where we capture all of the things that were part of the graduate profile. And then the third one is accountability, making sure that we are committed to our students and families to meet the expectations in the graduate profile.
Mr. Barlow.
Before we move this to action, I just wanted to hear how the access and equity and student achievement, how that will be assessed and evaluated.
Well, we don't have, we have not, well, I shouldn't say we haven't started working on it. We did start working on that, but we, until the goals are officially approved by the board, then the cabinet will start working on action plans and measurements. And then in another study session, we need to work with the board. If you remember, the board, you had a three-year operational plan on how you would help support the strategic plan. So, we'll have to, in a study session with the cabinet and board, create an operational plan for the school board.
So, this is just basi, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, this is just basically sort of an outline of where we're going.
Yes, we just need you to approve the goals so we can start working on the action plans and measurements, and then we'll bring those back to the board once those are created. But we just didn't feel we should put a lot of time into doing that until we know we have the right three goals.
Ms. Workman.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So, in the 2012 strategic plan, we had an awful lot of people working on measurements and actions and all of that thing. And I'm not sure how it happened, but it seemed like it just kind of fizzled out. Or did we actually make a decision that we were going to just let it go?
Well, the charge of that group was just to create the action plan and measurements, that's it. It wasn't for them to continue being part of the process.
Okay, so, but once those were created, what happened to them? Were they implemented?
Yes. Yes, and we provided reports to the board, and part of the vision, the vision cards were all part of that.
All right, vision cards.
Other questions? Okay, and again, I think it's important to emphasize that this is the foundation upon which the strategic plan will be built. This sort of tells what we really believe and what is most important to this district so that every action plan, every measure, as we figure out how to implement these, how to measure success, we're going to keep looking that these three goals, and I think they should be the foundation of every meeting we have, that these are the essence of what we as a district are all about. And then just one issue I want to bring up, and I don't suggest any changes, but there have been a couple of folks who, when they were looking at our goal that students should be critical thinkers. Words matter, and I think that those of us sitting here who've been doing this for a while, understand that critical thinking means using higher-order thinking skills, being analytical, being thoughtful, not just learning things by rote, but being able to problem solve. We've got, the word isn't in there anymore, but it also actually involves creative thinking, productive thinking. It's been taken by some to mean, they take it that critical thinking means you criticize everything you run into. And I thought, which, you know, makes sense. I mean, I get that, I value that. And I kept thinking about, is there some other word we can substitute? And I don't think that there is, but it may be the kind of thing we need to do, a little bit of explaining about, is that we don't want to raise kids to criticize everything. We do want to raise them to be thoughtful, not just so that they know the right answer, but they also know the right questions to ask. So, I think that's an important term to keep in there, but we may have a little explaining to do. Other questions or comments?
And just a reminder, once the goals are approved, we will work on the action plans and measurements, and then bring those back to the board. And then, like I said, in the meantime, we'll schedule a study session to work on the three-year operational plan for the board. And then I think I've shared with you in the past that I also plan, once school starts up again, to get a group of teachers and create a teacher profile. So, what do teachers have to do in order to have a student accomplish the graduate profile? Once that's done, we'll work with administration to create a leaders' profile, so what do leaders have to do to support teachers so they can do their work to make our kids be successful?
At this point, it's a briefing item. I know that there have been literally thousands of voices and pieces of information that have gone into creating this, that it's been months in the wordsmithing. It's been the subject of a study session, cabinet, and many others have looked it over. Is it, would it be efficacious for this to become an action item quickly, or can it sit for a couple more weeks?
Well, we would prefer you approve them so we can, I mean, we, like I've shared with you, we've started doing some work on the equity piece, but it would be nice to know this is exactly where the board wants us to be, and then we can start rolling up our studies and work to get the actions and measurements completed so we can bring them back to you for approval.
Move to action.
It's been moved and seconded. To move this to action, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This is now an action item. And there is no, I'm in the wrong screen. Can somebody else read it? Okay. Be it resolved, thank you. Be it resolved, the school board of Independent School District 535 approved the 2018 strategic plan update of the Rochester Public Schools.
Move approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
And I'm going to need to get back to, 7.01, approval of the 2018-2019 Student Handbook, briefing item.
Yes, board policy does not require the board to approve the discipline handbook, and really is probably not really a governance matter, but in order to save money for the district, we've added the rights, rules, and regs to this document, and by policy, the board has to approve the rights, rules, and regs document every year. So, what I'm going to do is going to go through just the changes that were made to the handbook. And the first one, if you want to follow along, is on page four. We just, with the Harold Scott leaving the district and taking a principal's job in the cities, we have removed him as a contact person in that section. There's still Gene Murphy, and then Afal Abbi's also still listed. And then if you go to page 13, we've added language, that's the section on the role of the police liaison officer. This is, if you remember, when I gave the board an update on the OCR agreement, this was the one final piece that they wanted us to get resolved. So, we've added, for example, theft, intentional damage to property, possession or distribution of drugs or alcohol, trespassing are examples of behavior that may be referred to law enforcement without necessarily involving violent or threatening behavior. So, OCR asked us to clarify that, so we've added that, and OCR has okayed that language to meet that requirement. Then we go to page 17, and this is just, we've changed the language to be inclusive, removing he or she, and we did that in that section.
Mr. Barlow.
I'm sorry, Superintendent, back on page 14, the police liaison officer. And the examples that were referenced, I was curious, is it optional, then, with the use of the language, may be referred, like there's a possible option based on the circumstance and/or the student that determines whether or not an actual referral to law enforcement will occur?
On page 14?
Yes, where you noted the language that would satisfy OCR for clarification, for example, theft, intentional damage to property, possession of, distribution of drugs.
What they, what OCR asked us, we said just potential criminal behavior, and they said that was too broad. They wanted examples of what that could possibly be. That doesn't mean it has to be referred to the police, but there, it could potentially be referred for...
Page 13.
13, I'm sorry. 13.
That's why I told you to turn to find it, 14. But yeah, they, one of the things, they did approve the changes we made, but that was the one piece. They said that statement is too broad, we need to give examples, so that's why we added that section.
And the only reason I raise the point is, for some, it may seem that there is an opportunity for... opportunity for arbitrariness to occur or to exist, though that is not the intent. Thanks for the clarification.
All right, where did I leave off? All right, page 33. The student health section was previously in the rights, rules, and regs, we just put it in the student hand, discipline handbook section. We felt that our parents tend to read that a little more closely than maybe the rights, rules, and regs, so we wanted, it's not anything different, it's just located in a different location. And then, on page 34, that's the rights, rules, and regs, which is the part that, by policy, the board is supposed to approve annually, and we, if they go to our district website and go into Board docs, there's a hyperlink to every one of those policies. And these are not every policy, obviously, but these are ones that are probably most relevant to parents. Okay, let's see. And then, on page 39, obviously, we changed the date to reflect the new school year. And then, on page 41, we have to print 42 pages, so we had a blank, instead of having a blank page, we added the school information, their schools' info numbers, so. Just a reminder, the handbook was changed for this last school year, was approved by OCR, and like I said, the one change with the police liaison was the one requirement that the OCR just wanted a little more clarification on it, so we've made that change, and as I mentioned earlier, they did approve that.
And my understanding is that when you were looking at changes for the student handbook, student school board were involved, as were listening sessions for parents, and then there was a form in the book as well for--
Right. We had two evening sessions where parents could come and give us feedback. In the handbook itself, we asked parents to sign off if they received it, and there's a section there where they could provide feedback, and then submit it to the schools. And then, I did facilitate a conversation with the student school board to give students an opportunity to provide input. One of the requirements of our agreement with OCR is we have to report to them all the suggestions we got, and if we weren't gonna do the suggestion, we had to explain why we weren't gonna do that.
Okay, yes, Ms. Selinger.
So, I would just like to say, I appreciate now having one booklet, and we don't have to say the yellow book or the discipline book and which one, so much appreciation for that. And I also love the new font, because I side-by-side compared them, and this font is much more visually appealing and visible, so thank you for that.
Thank you for that artistic note. Yes, Ms. Workman.
Yeah, I have a question. I don't expect an exact number off the top of your head, but have there been a lot of suggestions to the handbook and--
There were some, but not of more really directly connected to the handbook. Discipline, they were more, well, you know, parents should have the information about this, too, so you should put it in the handbook. There were some of those. Actually, what the students, the biggest suggestion the students gave us is to do away with out-of-school suspension, because they say it's too easy for kids, they can go and run around town and not do anything, make them in-school suspension. That was their recommendation. They thought that was tougher on kids than suspending them out of school.
Other questions? This is currently a briefing item?
Yes, we would appreciate it if you could--
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? On favor of moving it to action, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 approved the 2018-2019 Student Behavior Handbook of the Rochester Public Schools.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. 7.02, Approval of the 2019-2020 District Calendars. This is a briefing item. Ms. Monios.
Yes, this is gonna make a lot of people really happy, because we have a two-year-out calendar ready for your approval.
All your applause.
This calendar that we're proposing for the 1920-20 school year, just as a reminder, there's a meet-and-confere group, which is representatives of REA, and one board member and a few cabinet members. One of the things that that group does is they develop the calendar for the district. When we did the coming-up year, the 18-19 year, we were pretty clear that the following year, we'd go back to a traditional start, because that would give us an extra week of construction time. By starting the week early, we gain another week, so we're gonna gain two weeks of construction, and next summer, we have an indoor air quality project at Bamber Valley, which is gonna be a big project, so gaining two weeks of construction time will be extremely helpful, and that's how we messaged the early start calendar and told them that we were going back to traditional calendar. So what we're presenting for the 1920 year is a traditional calendar, starting on September 3rd, and the last day would be June 5th. I do want to call attention that the REA was very cooperative and strategically placed some of their flex conference days, so we could get a full two-week winter break and a full week of spring break. So I think this calendar not only goes back to the traditional start, but also provides a nice little block of time in there, a full two-week winter break.
Ms. Workman.
I think this was just a really great idea to do this, because I've already heard some comments from parents who are saying, oh, can we start in August all the time? And, no, we're gonna return, and it's, even when you explain to them about the construction, it can be really hard to grasp. So, once they have this in their hands, then it's done.
Other questions?
Move to action. Second.
Moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? Yes, I have discussion. Has this, this has been posted on the district website?
Not yet. We did talk about this at meet-and-confere, that we didn't feel the need to put it out there, because we've been communicating back when we did the other calendar, that this is what we're gonna do, go back to normal start. So we didn't feel we needed to put it out there again, like we've done in the past.
So if we move this to action and vote to approve it today, there won't--
Go on the website tomorrow.
But there won't be any additional--
Changes.
Changes.
Nope.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move this to action. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion passes. It is, be it resolved, that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the 2018-2019 calendar for district schools.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. 7.03, Rejection of Proposals for Crossing Guard Services.
Excuse me for a second.
Oh, yeah.
I think the resolution is incorrect. It should be the 1920?
1919.
You are correct. It's right on here.
We've already approved the 18-19.
Don't you wanna get into numbers? Should we redo that? Do-over, or can we just amend the?
Let's see.
Yep, I'm looking to you.
Just reread it.
Reread it.
Reread it.
Be it resolved, that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the 2018-2020--
No, 2019.
Okay, I'm just gonna--
Yeah. My turn.
Thank you. Be it resolved, that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the 2019-2020 calendars for district schools.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Days like this, I wish nobody was listening and nobody was watching. 7.03, Rejection of Proposals for Crossing Guard Services. This is a briefing item.
Yes, at this time, Mr. Scott Sheridan will brief us on this item.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
I'm here to brief you on a request to reject proposals that we had sent out for crossing guard services. Give you a quick little background, the school district currently has 33 locations throughout the city that we utilize crossing guards at, both in the morning and afternoon during the 170-day school year. During the summer, we also have, we, it says 15, but I recounted, we're actually up to 19 spots for this summer, for summer school sites, for the 15 summer school days as well. These positions are filled currently with seven district employees, and we also utilize a personnel service within the district, because we were having difficulty filling the positions in-house. So this program is run by transportation. We got together with transportation, we thought, kind of in the spirit with the garbage truck, that we'd go out and look at a private contractor to see if it'd be more cost-efficient to have them run the program and take that burden off of the transportation division. So we created an RFP, and we sent that out, we did some research first to see if there were actually companies that did this, and we did note that there were a few out there, mainly nationwide, nothing really local. But we created the RFP, and then we sent it out on April, in April, and to the firms that we identified that actually do this type of service. And we, on the 25th, the proposals were due, and we received proposals from three companies. Some of my staff, and some staff from facilities, we reviewed all three proposals. One of them was well over $400,000, and our current estimate that we pay in-house is about $300,000, $323,000. So we discounted that particular proposal right away. The other two were kind of within the budget, so we decided to do a phone interview with them, since they were from out of town. We did a phone interview with them, and we recognized fairly quickly that they weren't grasping the true picture of the state of the workforce here in Rochester, and the issues that we were having with trying to hire people. We felt they were really optimistic as far as their ability to hire people at the rates that they were proposing. And to be fair to them, and not to set them up for failure, we came, we decided that we would like to reject their proposals. I'm not saying it's forever off the table, but we might want to revamp how we write the proposal and give them some more time to do it if we decide to do it again. In the meantime, we're gonna be looking at different options that we can utilize in order to maintain the positions. Obviously, the safety of the children is a high priority, make sure they can get to school safely, but we're looking at other options as well, as far as potentially providing the sites that need crossing guards, providing them the funds, and asking them to utilize their own staff, to use those funds to supplement, paying their staff to do it, potentially looking for volunteers, there's all kinds of different options that we're considering. And being as it's now July, we just, with school starting in six weeks, we just, we need to move forward and go forward with what we currently have.
Any questions? Ms. Workman.
I'm curious, how did the pay compare, their proposal, proposed pay compared to what we're paying now? Was it substantially different?
It was, some were a little less, some were a little more. We currently, they gave a base rate, and we have, we have a base rate, but we actually pay, for instance, for a shift, we pay at one and a half times the shift, so, one and a half hours per shift, I mean. So if they're 45 minutes, we pay them for an hour and a half. If they're for a half hour, we pay them for an hour and a half. And some of the proposals were basically just paying them a lesser amount, or lesser amount of time as well. And we were, just weren't optimistic that they were gonna be able to find people that would want to work at that pay rate for that short of a time, potentially.
I have, I understand your rejection of the proposals, but I have a, sort of a more general question. You have seven district people who are crossing guards, and then the rest are supplied by a service.
That's the latest stats that I have from transportation, that express personnel--
Okay.
--work to provide the rest.
Is there a reason that the district can't hire more? I mean, is, I mean, that--
I don't have an answer for that one.
Well, I can tell you, it's difficult to find individuals who want to work an hour and a half in the morning, an hour and a half in the afternoon, even, we even struggle, I know when we hired a couple, a few two-hour pairs for Mighty Oaks, we struggled to find individuals that wanted just to work two hours a day. So I don't think it's, that we don't want to have more, that, I guess, our employees is just finding people who want to work for--
Make that commitment.
--at that type of--
Yeah, I understand the dilemma, it's just, I mean, we've all seen it, these are really important people. Not only are they putting themselves in peril in all kinds of weather, but what I've witnessed is that sometimes that's the best part of a kid's day, is that crossing guard who, you know, pats them on the head and talks to them as they're standing there in 20 below weather, waiting for the light to change. I mean, it's a really important, important job, so that is not about this, but I just hope that we continue to get good people who are committed and who love kids as much as we do.
Question?
Yes, Ms. Workman.
Okay, so, I'm getting into the weeds with this, so I'll admit that to begin with, but is there any possibility that paraprofessionals who are already in the building--
That's one of the options Scott didn't mention that. I mean, all that he mentioned, we even looked at, is there an opportunity with S&amp;S, if, you know, we can pair it with that position as well? So we're looking at all different ways to do that.
Because, I mean, I can certainly understand, I mean, unless it's a retired person who really loves kids in cold weather, that it's gonna be hard to find those employees, but if they're already at the school anyway, you know, some might appreciate having that extra pay as well.
I might point out that the spots that we put the crossing guards are identified by the number of students that are located in that walk area, and we have noticed a trend in some spots where there might potentially be 20 students that would be walking to school, yet only one or two utilize the crossing guard. And so we're also researching that and looking for ways, is there a way that, since the bus is driving right through there anyway, is it just more cost-efficient to have a bus stop within that walk zone and pick up those two students, to save the dollars in the time and effort that you're saving with the crossing guard, and just put them on a bus, if there's room, to continue down? But we want to be fair, and we want to be, we don't want to create something that--
I'm already hearing that discussion in my head, so--
Is it 20 are gonna show up, 20 more are gonna show up for a bus ride?
Yeah, I know, but I'm just, but we are looking at all options.
So when, so when those students don't cross with the crossing guard, are they generally, I mean, is it safe? Are they taking risks? And if so, do we know who those particular students are, so we could work with--
When we are aware of it, we make the principal aware of it, and then they pull the kid in and remind them where they should be crossing safely, it's just, some kids just don't want to walk all the way up to the corner when they can just run across the street.
Cross the street.
Other questions? This is a briefing item.
Move approval.
Move to action.
Move to action.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? On favor of moving it to action, say aye.
Aye.
Be it resolved, that the School Board of Independent School District 535 reject all the proposals for crossing guard services in response to RFP 042518.
Move approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Sheridan. 7.04, Approval of Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan for Fiscal Years 2019 through 2028. Did I get that right, the years and the time? Okay. Briefing item.
Yes, Mr. Sheridan will brief us on this agenda item.
Thank you, board members. I'm looking for approval on the long-term facility--
I'm looking for approval on the long-term facility maintenance revenue application for those fiscal years of, it's actually 2018, which is a reconciliation, and then 2019 through 2028 for the future of the long-term facility maintenance revenue, the spending of it. What has changed over the years is, we used to call it the ten-year plan, and we used to have to submit this ten-year plan to MDE, and they'd review it and approve it after board approval. Now, what we have to do is just fill out an application. It's a U-FAR's codes with application for potential projects that we're anticipating over the next ten years, in addition to reconciling the current year, fiscal years of what we actually did based on what we had applied for last year. So, it's really eleven years. So, what we normally do when we create this document is, as you know, we did a facility assessment back in 2016. LHB Architects came in and the board approved them to come in and do a full facility assessment. And they provided us a lot of background on, as far as what, they did, they reviewed all the envelopes of the buildings, the roofs, the tuck pointing, windows, indoor air quality, all that kind of thing, and gave us a blueprint as far as what we can expect or what needs to be serviced in the next fifteen years. So, we utilize that document along with our own field assessments by the construction services people to create a, an idea of what we need to spend our long-term facility maintenance revenue funds on. And so, we came up with that. There's like sixty-nine million, nine-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety dollars in planned project costs that we're going to use the long-term facility maintenance revenue for, or that we're applying to use it, the application piece. The plan also includes the planned indoor air quality projects at Bishop and Bamber Valley that are currently in design, and some other larger projects in fiscal year twenty that we identified, some windows, chiller issues that we identified that we want to attach to a bond as well, and that's twenty-five million, five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in bonds for fiscal year nineteen-twenty. And what Business Services did for us is recognize the fact that we have about over seventy-five million dollars in unfunded projects, so they created a bond schedule for us and that we put into this application as well. I know the numbers seem really, really high, but at least it gives you a blueprint over the next ten years of potential projects that we might be bringing to the board. Now, your approval of this application doesn't mean these are all the projects we're going to do. Obviously, we're going to have to bring them to you for you to approve for the projects that qualify over one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand as of August, and so that doesn't change. This is just an application to notify MDE that these are potential projects that we might be looking at doing and bonding in the next ten years.
Mr. Smith.
So, these are, this is existing facilities. This is nothing, you know, regarding the need for a new school, that's not in, that's not in this document.
That's correct. This is for the thirty-three, thirty-two buildings.
So, this is the existing facilities, our inventory fills the things, everything we need to do from a capital standpoint to make sure we're maintaining our facilities over this ten-year period.
That's correct.
Any other questions about either information Mr. Sheridan has included or anything in the file attachments?
Nothing's going to change in here.
No. And actually, MDE sent, gave us the current form, but they provided it to us on June twentieth, which was after our June nineteenth meeting, so we couldn't bring it to you, yet they require the board approval of this by the end of July. So, here we sit.
Move to action.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 approve the long-term facility maintenance plan, application for fiscal years twenty-eighteen, twenty-eighteen through fiscal year twenty-twenty-eight.
Who approved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Workman.
One, one quick thing. I'd really like to express my appreciation to you and everybody else who works on this because I think our district has really taken a very conservative approach to the projects that are down the road. Occasionally, we have surprises, but there are always, there's always wiggle room in that. And just having all of this available, I mean, in front of us, not that I'm going to say, would you please tell me what this particular detail is about, because that's not necessary from a governance level, but just to express my appreciation, I'm sure the rest of the board too, because I think you guys really do a good job with this, so.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Sheridan. And you'll be staying with us for a bit longer. Seven point oh five, approval of energy savings contract, another briefing item, Mr. Williams.
Yes, Mr. Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will be joining Mr. Sheridan to brief us on this agenda item.
Great, thank you. I'm glad I finally get an opportunity tonight to be up here, so. As you probably know, from approving budgets year after year, we spend about three-and-a-half million to three-point-nine million annually, depending on the year and how the weather goes and how we use our energy. But that's a lot of money, and we think as staff, there's definitely ways that we could trim those costs, and we think that's the right thing to do. I don't think anyone around here is intentionally wasting energy, but I also think that we don't have a lot of focus and we don't have the follow-through that we could have to be more intentional with our energy management. So, as staff, we did put in the budget in seventeen-eighteen, a full-time position for energy savings. We declined to hire that during the last school year. Instead, we worked on, with several companies and interviewed them during the spring of twenty-eighteen for the purposes of establishing an energy savings program. Through the process, one vendor kind of rose to the top, and that is Synergistic. Synergistic is proposing a plan that I'm going to talk to you about here in a couple minutes, but basically bringing in a full-time energy specialist, licensing to us and teaching us how to use the energy cap, energy management, or energy accounting software, implementing behavioral and operational practices, and shifting energy usage to periods with less demand on distribution. So, a little bit about Synergistic, these are their slides that they provided for me for purposes of bringing you up to speed a little bit on their company. They were established in nineteen-eighty-six, and they have saved their clients more than five billion dollars in energy costs. They've worked with fourteen-hundred-twenty-five clients, and they're working with, in twenty-three-thousand-five-hundred buildings nationwide. Really, when it comes to saving energy, there's four main tiers of things you can do. Tier one being behavioral or operational practices, you can do that first. Those are simple things from turning off lights to putting heating and cooling on systems and timers that they run only when you're there. Tier two, you could buy more efficient equipment and upgrade older products and put in more energy-saving equipment. Tier three is trying to time things out better so that you're using energy maybe at, in the middle of the night, such as making ice for coolers and things like that, so that it's being done when energy costs less. And then, the fourth and final step there is you could implement renewable type of energies like solar. This program that they're proposing really focuses on tier one and tier three. So, we're, we're going to deal with behaviors, operational practices within the district, changing how we as employees work and use energy. This is not a program that's going to sell us on, you have to buy this type of new equipment. If you don't buy this new equipment, then we can't work with you. That is not at all what Synergistic is proposing to us. And then again, that tier three, too, anywhere where we can shift energy usage, we will try to do that. Oh no. Hopefully, it comes back. So, here's the, the projected savings. Over a five-year period, one million, nine-hundred-and-forty thousand. So, that's in the year one, two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars, we would be spending less than what we have currently budgeted. So, for purposes of establishing the eighteen-nineteen school year budget, we set it basically the same as last year, three million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand. So, that two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand would be less than what we've currently budgeted. So, we'd hope that when we come and give you a final report at the end of the eighteen-nineteen school year, that's about how much we would be under budget. And then, if you expand that over five years, as we get better and better and do more things, it should add up to one million, nine-forty. So, how does this work? How do we pay Synergistic then for the services? So, this is working on a contingency basis. So, if we don't save any money, they don't earn any money. However, they're going to provide all of the costs upfront, so they're going to help hire staff, bring professional engineers and such to us and work with us on getting all of our systems fine-tuned, helping observe how we're doing and make recommendations on how to save more energy. The number that you see up above the one million, nine-forty is about half of what the total savings are, so they would receive the other one million, nine-hundred-and-forty-thousand, approximately. And out of that money, that's what they're using to pay for the staff, travel, so on and so forth. So, that's not all just pure profit for them. They are taking a risk, they are spending money in advance of collecting even a nickel from us. And then, over time, we, we expect that it would just become ingrained in us that we conserve as much as we can whenever we can, and that we have all of our equipment optimized and running as efficient as possible. So, I talk about Synergistic and what they can bring. So, they can bring expertise, which is the people. They have many people that work in this industry and are considered experts. So, again, they'll hire an energy specialist to us. That will be our kind of full-time local person that's here every day. Some days, maybe they're working at four AM with maintenance and trying to observe what's going on at that hour. Other days, they might be working at ten PM trying to observe what's going on at the end of the day. Where are we not turning things off? How can we fine-tune things? Synergistic will also bring the technology, so they have a lot of systems that they can monitor and, and know how things are working. And then, there's that whole analytic piece behind the scenes, you know, monitoring how much we're spending, what did we used to spend, what are we spending now, or how much energy did we use, how much are we using now? So, we hope that that changes habits, behaviors, operations, and our culture, which has a result of less money spent on electricity, gas, water. We're hoping for a twenty to thirty percent savings in those utilities. One thing to note is, we believe that this will actually improve comfort. We will work with them, or they will work with us, to respond to calls about comfort so that the plan is not just to raise all the air conditioning temperatures, so it's just hot and stuffy, or to lower the heat, so it's just freezing cold. It's trying to get it dialed into the exact right amount. You know, one thing that bothers me is sometimes I drive down the road, I drive past a school in the middle of winter and the windows are open. Obviously, we're putting too much heat into that building, so we need to kind of fine-tune some systems in a building like that. And that's really what we're trying to do. We're trying to dial in those heat temperatures so they're right within a very comfortable range, and the energy specialists will get to know our employees, they'll be responding to the calls, they'll go out, they'll help assess and try to really troubleshoot with the other engineers that will be coming on site and say, how can we fix this? How can we make sure that everything's working correctly? From as far as a capital investment, we hope that if the equipment is running less or running more efficient, it'll last longer. So, therefore, hopefully, the long-term facility maintenance, over time, we don't need to spend as much on replacing HVAC equipment because it's going to get some more mileage out of it. Operational, I think one of the key things Synergistic brings is training. They're going to train our custodial staff on how to make sure things are being set correctly and used correctly, and just kind of giving that professional development to a group of staff that sometimes gets overlooked in our environment. Synergistic has a very good reputation. I personally did a phone call to Owatonna, who has used their services, and they had very positive things to say. In fact, that was one of the things I wanted to mention, that Owatonna as a school district is using about eighty percent of the energy that we do when you measure how much energy goes in per square foot in their district. And so, you know, that's, I'm kind of eyeballing that out there, saying, you know, if Owatonna can do it, I think Rochester can do it, too.
And better.
And better. I hope we can do it better. Yes, thank you. So, just to recap, no capital outlays, we're not sitting here asking you for money to spend. This will be budget neutral. In fact, we'll save money, so they'll cover the cost of the people, travel and so on. They'll get half the savings and pay for these costs, and then we'll just realize the other half by paying less in electricity, natural gas. This will help our cash flow. Specifically, too, we don't have to pay for any of the services for the first six months, so they're kind of paying all the bills upfront on getting the people going and training and getting things rolling as we learn what we're doing, and then we start paying the savings after we've verified that we've actually saved energy. We're again, hoping for improved comfort and that Synergistic really brings that extra personal touch to support our facilities, our maintenance staff. And again, I think it's important that we're not having to add to our payroll to get this done. I, I think this is a perfect time to be approving a contract like this. The DMC initiative, one of the energy initiatives within that, is trying to get all the government buildings, like RCTC, city, county, and they approached the school district and said, can we get you all on board to make a commitment to reducing energy? And then, we want to be able to share that and encourage our other businesses in town to also save energy. I think, as I was listening to some of the school board candidate debates last night, you know, a message of budgeting and being more efficient or operational was a message that came across in several of the comments, and I think this is an exactly perfect-timed response to, hey, we, we realize that we could probably save some money here and let's do this, the time's right to do that. And I think, you know, the last thing is, I just, I hope that this wears off on the next generation. I hope that the students, the children, see us as adults taking initiative to be better stewards of our environment, of our natural resources, of our utility usage, and that we pass that on down to the next generation, so.
Yeah, I had a couple of things. I, back when I was an elementary principal in Iowa, I was also our district energy manager, and we actually worked with this company. They were a different name at that time, and at that time, you had to pay upfront, you had to pay for their services. We had seven buildings in that district. We saved annually about four-hundred thousand dollars, which is seven buildings. It's really, people immediately go to, oh, like John mentioned, oh, we're going to just make it colder or hotter, and it's really not that. We established the set points for heat and air conditioning. What they will do, and what I did when I was energy manager, I had to learn each building. I would get at the EMS system, and I'd know, okay, this building, I had to start at forty-five minutes before the kid showed up to get where I wanted to be. This building, I could wait thirty minutes before the kid showed. I mean, you had to set the EMS system to get it at that point. The thinking is, when kids are in session, we're comfortable. Now, when kids aren't in session, that's a different story. Our staff knew that if you came in on weekends during the winter, you better dress appropriately because it's not going to be like it is during the week. It's really, as he said, it's really about training the adults to change their behaviors. Custodians there, if I'm cleaning a building, we're in this hallway, the lights are off, only the lights that are lit in the area that we're cleaning. When we're done cleaning, we shut them off and go to another section. At the elementary level, you know, classrooms, teachers have, you're the, you're the line leader, you're this, they had, you're the energy manager today, so you're the last one in the line, and when we leave the classroom, you shut the lights off when we leave. So, it's really, like John said, it's not only helping the district, but it's training kids to be a little more energy-conscious as well, but, and, you know, a lot of my work was going in at nights in buildings, in pitch dark. It was easier to go in at dark in the classrooms because I could see what was left on, because there'd be lights. I have to share a story with you. I know it's getting late, but I'm going, anyway. Went into a science classroom at the high school and didn't know, the last time I was in there, I didn't know, but they had a rabbit in a cage. Well, when I was walking around in the dark looking, something moved and scared the living daylight. I mean, I took off running to the door, knocked over a bunch of desks. I didn't realize that there was a rabbit, because it wasn't in there the last time I was in that classroom, so. But anyway, it's really about training the adults and having a person will check up and, you know, I'd leave them a little note, you left your VCR, back in the day when we had VCRs, you left your VCR on. So, it's really, I, I think it's a good program. If we can save, you know, I know, I think that's a little conservative, in my opinion, based on my experience- based on my experience, you know, if we saved 400 and, almost 400 with seven buildings, if we have 34 buildings and a lot more people, I think we can save a lot of money. And I know people will say, well, you know, turning off my computer doesn't make the biggest deal. Well, maybe not one. But if you think of the thousands of computers that we have in our district, if you turn them off, how much you can save. And they have all of that information as far as what kind of savings you get when you do little things like that. So I, I think it's a great program. Why I like it now is there's no cost to us. I mean, it's, you come and save money, and if you, you do a good job, then you're going to benefit, and we're going to benefit. If you don't, then we're not adding anything. So I, I like that change that they made. And I, I think it's a good program for our district, and I agree with John, the timing's right for that. We've been talking for a couple of years about wanting to do something about energy and hiring somebody to do this for us, so we just couldn't work it in the budget. So I'm excited about this opportunity.
Three things. First of all, some people do still have VCRs.
Okay.
Second, second, there's nothing more terrifying than a bunny in a cage.
Well, in pitch dark, it's really scary.
Did you ever tell your children that story?
Oh, yes.
Oh, gee, that was a mistake. Third, and to me, one of the things that sounds the best about this plan is that it comes with people, that there are people who will be here to train our people, which I think is really important, having that presence. What, how are they supervised, however? I mean, everything sounds great about the program, but if, if there were somebody here, one of their employees who was just not doing what he or she needed to do, is that, what kind of supervision is there?
I don't have a perfect answer for that, but I, I believe in the relationship that we've built with them so far. I think they'd be very attentive to hearing us and working with us. I was told that, you know, somewhere between 12 to 16 people or so are going to be cycling through here on a weekly basis. So I, I'm certainly confident that that will be followed through if we need help.
Well, and we do have a representative from the company here that we can invite up if the board would like. But I do know, I don't remember what the official title is, the one person, but my understanding is, I think, is that person is going to kind of oversee everything that's going on in our district. But if you would like, I can invite him up to respond to that question, if you would like us.
Well, no, I mean, if you're convinced and you, and you've had experience with them, and Owatonna has, that that communication is going to be ongoing, so that there would be someone who would be supervising their people, I'm comfortable with that.
So they're not our, our employees, I understand that. But do they, will they have to go through the same kinds of background checks and everything else that we require our employees to do?
Yeah, we would want them to do that because we're going to give them office space and a phone and things like that. So they're going to wear a district badge, and so we'll, we'll want to treat them like an, an employee and do that kind of stuff. Yep.
Ms. Langer.
They're welcome to start right here in the cool spot of the board table, as you see my paper blows. And Ann isn't here to, but Ann and I discuss the cold spot in the room all the time. So I think this is great. We were just having this conversation at home about vampire energy and how our DVR and our, all our gaming systems have been on probably for five years, and no one has been downstairs in that time. So I think this is great, and I really appreciate, John, you talking about, both of you talking about the impact on our students to be good stewards. I think that's terrific that we're going to set a good example for them. I think this is, it sounds like a, a great opportunity to work.
Okay, since you two have told a story, I'm going to tell another story about energy. When our oldest son, who was very much into computers and computer building, went to college, a month later, we get a call from the electric department, you know, there must be something wrong with your meter because your electric usage has dropped considerably. So personal testimony to that, it, it makes a difference, makes a huge difference.
Thank you. This is a briefing item.
Move to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. To move this to action, any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? This is now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the energy savings contract with Synergistic for the period of August 1st, 2018 to July 31st, 2023.
Move approval. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
7.06, approval of 2018-2020 Community Education Work Agreement. Briefing item. Mr. Moon.
Yes. Amy Ike, Executive Director of Community Ed, will brief us on this agenda item.
I told Scotty should stay. Well, good evening, board. I'm bringing to you a document that we bring to you every two years to update. This covers a number of our staff groups within Community Ed, those that are not covered under bargaining unit agreements or in the off-schedule categories. So these would be sort of everybody else that is not covered in one of those other areas. You saw that there were three sections in the document, adult basic ed, early childhood, family education, and school-age childcare. Each one has similarities across it. We have a few uniquenesses to each program, so you'll see a little bit different language as you go through each one. I would just highlight a couple of things for you. Some of the changes you saw in the document are simply for the year, the update. We did do some standardization of district language. We worked with business services on some things like eliminating the automatic enrollment clause that was in here. That's an old outdated clause that still remains from years past, so we are eliminating that. And the dental insurance cap, as you're familiar, is something that we're standardizing across all of our agreements as well. On page four, we have a, something that's been requested for a while by employees in the Adult Basic Ed Classroom Assistant Group. They were losing income on inclement weather days. That really was no fault of their own, and with the level of that position, we wanted to protect that. So we've made that change, that they will be paid for the hours they were scheduled to work on the inclement weather days. So that is, it's a small, but I think important, change that we made there. I'm just paging through, and most changes, again, are either the years or the standardization or some clarity changes. For example, in the bereavement sections, we did add a phrase, as sick days allow, because we do take the bereavement days out of sick time. So that was never quite clear the way it was written, so we did add that in there. Just paging through for any others. Just a note that on page 11 in the SAC section, you will notice that we changed how sick leave and vacation leave are accrued for those employees. And that's simply a function of the number of employees in that group as opposed to the ECFE and the ABE group. It works fine in the other two groups, but with the number of SAC staff that are under this and the fact that they work year-round, we had some challenges where the staff needed to take some leave time and their accrual didn't occur until September, when school started. And so we decided to go with the full allocation with those allocated on a monthly basis still, but starting right away in July, so that they have access to that leave throughout the year since they work year-round in our summer program. We did not change the SAC salary schedule this time. You made a kind of an emergency update to that a couple of years ago and took a significant jump up in that to help us be competitive in the marketplace. We feel like we are competitive at this point, and the raises for individual staff members occur through the advancement that occurs within that chart. So we did not make a change to the chart itself. We did remove graphic designer on page 15 from the auxiliary list because that is currently paid under the clerical bargaining unit. So it really doesn't belong in this agreement anymore. That's outdated. And then on page 16, you'll see the ranges of pay for our various Community Ed instructors, our screening nurses, our after-school center directors and things, just updated some to our current needs to run those programs.
Thank you. Questions?
How many people are discovering roughly?
Well, SAC is the largest group at well over 100, so probably between 130, 150 any given year. If you include all of our individual Community Ed instructors who might teach one or two classes, then it's more like 300.
Other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to move this to action.
It's been moved and seconded. To move this to action, any discussion? On favor of moving this to action, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This is an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby ratify the 2018-2020 Community Education Work Guide for Community Education Employees.
Move approval.
It's been moved and?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Ike. 7.07, approval of revisions to the policies manual. This is a briefing item by the policy committee. It's working.
And just to remind you that our policy requires that this sit until the next meeting, so we don't, we won't be.
There will be no action.
Correct. Okay, so the first policy, 208, development, adoption, and implementation of policies. There were a couple of changes under implementation. We just changed the language of the implementation. The superintendent employees designated, designated by the superintendent and school board vice chair or the designee shall be responsible for keeping the policy manuals current. On the annual review, there's a whole list of policies that we were to be reviewing annually, and we removed all of those except for the first one, which is the code of ethics, which the committee felt that was important for us to be talking about every year. Questions on that? Okay. Policy 213.01, community advisory committees. These were updated to reflect the current practice. So we added the long-range planning, this, long-range facility planning committee, media services reconsideration committee, and struck out the committees that are no longer in Policy 214, out-of-state travel for school board. Section 6 was removed from policies because it is procedure, and we don't keep procedures in our policies. It will be in the procedures section. Policy 250, legal counsel. Section 3, responsibilities, members of the school board deleted, reviewed the service record and replaced with renew. Since we don't review our attorney expenses after they have occurred, it's just going to be reviewed by the board chair.
Excuse me, did you say reviewed or renewed?
Reviewed. No, replaced with renew. We deleted the review and replaced. We deleted, reviewed the service record and replaced it with renew. Isn't that correct? Do I read that wrong in my notes?
No, you're right. It's renewed.
Yeah, okay. Policy 302.
Just, just a little explanation of that.
Yeah.
You, we do not always, from our local, well, from both attorneys, we don't always get a monthly bill, but when we get the bill, they appear on that monthly bills that you approve and consent. So we put it, we thought it was important to remove the review, the service record because.
We don't always get the bills in at the monthly manager.
It's billed in consent already, but we do, on an annual basis, have to identify our attorney.
Right.
Which was on the agenda that you approved earlier tonight.
Right. Okay, policy 302, section 3, general responsibility. We remove the language that is no longer current and, yeah, that's it for that one. Policy 524, internet acceptable use and safety policy. We added one statement about students and video recording. I can pull that up real quick.
I got it right here. It's, it's number three under section 6. It says, "Students are prohibited from audio or video recording on school property without prior permission from the principal or a teacher, and that permission will be granted only for educational purposes." The policy technically already covers that because it said they can only be used for educational purposes, but we were having some situations where kids were videotaping things and then posting it. So we want to dispel it out very clearly that you're not allowed to record things like that without prior permission. So we'll have administrators, when they go over the handbook, to really call out this particular change in the policy, so they're aware that if you do videotape, for example, a fight or something, you're violating policy.
Ms. Langer.
Then to follow up on that, how does that feed into the, the discipline? Would that be considered a level-one offense?
That's a good question.
You can get back to me.
Yeah, I think if I recall, it fit, we felt it fit under a level-two offense, but I'll give back to you on that one.
Okay, thank you.
And then everything below it was renumbered. So we also reviewed policies 301, 303, 304, 306, and recommended no changes to those policies, but we did review them.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, and we'll be voting on this at our next meeting. 7.07, 7.08, closed session for property. This is an action item.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3, I make a motion to move into closed session to discuss potential real estate transactions.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in closed session at 8:15 p.m. We are reconvened at 8:32 p.m. and adjourned at 8:32 p.m.
You came to Oregon, guy, and all you got was a t-shirt?
Yeah. Yeah.